Welcome everyone to the special meeting of the Marcy Family Connections Meeting. I would love for us to all introduce ourselves, share name pronouns and what class or classes, if you have a kiddo at Marcy, what they might be in. And if we can just kind of popcorn style around, so once you're done, call on, call on the next person. There's not too many of us here. So I will go first. My name is Claire Trolley. I use she/her pronouns and we have a first grader at Marcy in Nicole's class.
I'm Andrew Trolley. I use he/him pronouns. You already know we have a first grader in Nicole's class and I also teach instrument music at Marcy.
And listen over to Taylor.
Hello, happy Friday. I am Taylor. I use he/him pronouns. I have a daughter who was in Ms. Joy's class in kindergarten. And I will popcorn over to Sharon.
Hey, everyone, I'm Sharon Colby, she/her, and I have a daughter in second grade Andrea's class. Send over to Mike.
Hey, I'm Mike, he/him. I also have a second grader in Andrea's class. I'll send it to Sonia.
Hey, everybody, I'm Sonia. I have a kindergartner and also enjoys class. Who is on homebound instruction because of disability. So he receives his services in our house. I use any pronouns. I will popcorn over to Amy, Amy or Amy Jo, who just popped up. If you have a preference for which you are called, you can tell me because I don't know.
I'm Amy Jo, mom to Sadie, who is in second grade Andrea's class as well. And I'll pick Emmy.
Hi, y'all. I'm Emmy. I imagine we're sharing kids grades. My daughter Leora is in Leah's class in kindergarten and I have a three year old. And I just hopped on. So if you haven't been called yet, raise your hand. Or am I the last one? Trinity.
Hi, everybody. I have a second grader in Tamsin's class and a fourth grader in Lee's class. And I am also the assistant principal at Marcy. I think that was everybody, right?
I think we have Casey and Lindsay.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll pick Casey then.
Hi, sorry. I'm Casey and my son Nils is in Ms. Leah's kindergarten. And then who else did we have Lindsay? Yeah, popcorn to Lindsay, I think.
Oh, yeah, I'm Lindsay, she/her. I have a fifth grader Jackson in Nina's class and third grader Odessa in Sarah's class. And I think I'm at right.
I think, I think everyone has been able to introduce themselves. Well, welcome, wonderful. I'm so glad to see some new faces here this evening. It is wonderful to have you all. We wanted to have kind of a special quick meeting this evening to talk about the upcoming staff strike educator strike that may be happening next week with Minneapolis Public Schools. I'm going to put the agenda one more time into the chat. But what we kind of wanted to talk about was both kind of how we can support families during this time and how we can support staff as well. And Trinity is here and we also want to acknowledge that Trinity is a parent at Marcy, but she's also a staff member who has some pretty kind of strict things about what she can and cannot say about the upcoming strike. And so we're all gonna, you know, respect if she says, oh, I can't answer that. So we do wanna, you know, kind of acknowledge that we do have a little bit of limitations there, but we're not limited by our creativity and how to support our whole community during whatever might happen next week. So with that being said, I wanted to give. Sorry, our Google Home just talked to us. I just want to give just a couple of updates with a couple of things for everybody. And then I would love to turn it over and hear what others would like to add or have questions that they might have or anything like that. Um, so in the agenda, Sonia's rock star of a sister put together a list of resources for childcare and activities and safe places for, for youth to be if they're not able to be in school. And so I have shared that to the Marcy Facebook page. And oh, hang on, looks like Trinity tried to get into something.
I can let you know that she, my sister works for Hennepin County. She actually works in juvenile probation. She's education coordinator. But so she's put this together and it's county stamped, but she, I've communicated with her a lot today and she is continuing to take in resources and will be adding to this list over the weekend and then issuing an updated list with everything that community partners are sending her way. So I can make sure that when I get that updated list on Monday, I send it back out to you, Claire, or to the Facebook page, or I'll get it to a few different people so it can make the rounds.
It says we need access to get to those documents on there.
To the resource one. Okay, let me, I will copy and paste it into the chat.
Oh, that's a lot.
Yeah, well, do you know of another way?
Couldn't you just change the permission?
This, I don't own this one.
You could duplicate the file.
Okay, we will update this resource list while other people are talking and get this sorted out. So thank you for letting us know, letting me know about that. So we wanted to talk about resources. We also, we're kind of thinking about different ways to make sure that families had access to food as well. And families will be able to pick up food at Marcy. And in theory, it might even be like the weekly boxes instead of the daily boxes. There's also meal options through every meal, which used to be Sheridan story. But an additional thing that was proposed that we do by Kate, who is our treasurer and was unable to attend tonight, was Chol, our social worker, has gift cards, food gift cards, you know, to Target and Cub and stuff like that for families, which is to increase his budget so that he can buy more of those gift cards and distribute them to families as he sees the need or hears of the need or is aware of the need. And so one thing that I would like to do is put forth a motion to increase Chol's budget so that, because Chol will also be on strike next week if, if the strike is happening. So that he can, he can get those kind of funds and get them to families before the strike were to happen. So I would like to put forth a motion to increase Chol's budget so that he can buy more gift cards for families.
I second that motion.
Thank you.
Is that what I'm supposed to do? Okay.
All those in favor? Perfect. All right. Is there anything else as far as like meals or food that people wanted to discuss or bring up before we talk about additional childcare or additional things we can do to support the families?
I have a couple of questions. One is, this is more general, so with respect for not needing to spend too much time on it tonight, but it's something I'd like to propose, but continue to discuss moving forward. Every time we have something like this happen, and I'm a new parent to Marcy because my kids in kindergarten and we're homebound. So I haven't even ever been to the building myself and neither has my kid, right? But like, I wonder if we feel like, like how fortunate we are to have Chol, who I hope has like more information and relationships with families who might most need the support of gift cards. That's so super lucky, but I, I wonder how the pandemic, for parents who have been around for longer, how the pandemic has impacted just the relationship building that sort of organically happens between parents, families, caregivers, so that we kind of know what our, what our other parents are sort of dealing with or experiencing, what their lives are like. And I mean, what, because I don't really know how that even works, you know? I have an 18 year old in a private school though, and we all know each other. So we know if a family is needing support or help and we can all easily do that, but it's tiny school. So I wonder, do we feel like as site council, like if we just were to say as site council, as this body, do we feel like we know who our families are? And like we could identify, and I don't mean like in a hyper surveillance kind of a way, but I mean, like, do we have enough relationship within the families of our school right now to feel like we have this money, we would get it to the people who really need it? And if we don't, do we want to start spending some time and energy going forward in site council, talking about how that might be a targeted goal? That might take years, but that might be something that we really want to invest in. How can we increase relationship so that when something like this happens, we just have better scaffolding already in place to feel like we can do inter-community support? So that's just one sort of thing that I put out there again, not something we can, you know, fix or answer necessarily tonight, but I would like to put in our attention. And then the other thing is students receiving special education, all the childcare options that are going to be available to those families are not going to be accessible for a lot of kids receiving special education. And do we have any mechanism as a site council to be keeping tabs on what the needs of disabled students are in our school? Because most of the resources that, that we can push out to families are going to have a lot of particular access barrier points for families with, with disabled kids. And I know we have a really healthy ASD program at Marcy. So just again, something to throw on our radar. And if we don't feel like we have a good solution to that now, maybe we want to start working on what our solution is going to be when we need it again in the future.
Um, thank you, Sonia. Those are some fabulous points. I don't want to overstep whatever Trinity or Andrew might say, but as far as my experience, Chol is like the rock star of social workers and has like a very good relationship with, with families of all different levels of need and whatever might, might be. And so. Oh, thank you. And so, you know, I do, I do think that, you know, he has a pretty, pretty good idea as to who and where might, might need those funds. I think that as a parent with a first grader, who's been a part of the Marcy community for longer, but only for two years with a kid, you know, the pandemic has thrown a big old wrench into a whole bunch of community building. You know, we're not able to meet in person. We're not able to have a lot of that organic relationships that you were talking about. And that is certainly something that is a priority for me once we are able to do that. But I'm kind of, I'm kind of stuck as to how much we can do now. Where, while so many things are virtual, but I would be very, very open to anything you can, you can suggest before we can kind of be doing things in person. Because I have a whole lot of ideas then, but I'm totally stuck right now. And, and would love your ideas and support with, with all of, with all of that. I don't know if Trinity or Andrew or anyone else wants to.
I, I'm going to just agree with what Claire's saying that building really strong connections with families has been more difficult this year than it has been in years past because of all of our barriers and with the reconfiguration of the district and our school. I would have said to you last year that I felt very strong that the parent group could have a fair baseline of maybe some different families that needed support and had lots of different avenues for different connections with families. And I think that that's been a big challenge this year. And I agree with your points, Sonia, that these are things that are real lofty goals that I know that this Family Connections Group has and also Site Council has to really build a strong community with families and caregivers so that we're able to support each other in all different sorts of ways as a school community.
I was just going to add one thing. I agree with, you know, what everyone has said, and I think that that's of course been a piece that has been missing and a lot of us have been missing just on a personal level. And I know I keep waiting, waiting, waiting for when we can do more things in person, but also at the same time, I think we should just start brainstorming like you were saying, Claire. I mean, because not everyone is going to be able to be in person anyway. Once we can, that's not accessible for everybody. And I think it would be really helpful to, at another time, start brainstorming ways that we can connect with more people. You know, Zoom works for a lot of folks, but not for everyone. And just be thinking about how we can, you know, connect with, create those connections with different cultural groups too. And yeah, I agree.
I don't want to leave Sonia's other recognition or comment or observation about the accessibility of childcare. And so I don't, I don't know Trinity, if you know anything more about that.
The only thing that's been shared with administrators at this point is there will be 240 spots for childcare that can be provided by four different sites in the district. I don't know where those sites are. They haven't given us a whole lot of parameters on who is going to be able to have access to those spots. So we're waiting to hear that information because I know that the communication has gone out that you should contact your school to get information about it. And they're kind of holding off on sharing some of that information until things are finalized, I guess, and until the strike actually happens, which is extremely problematic and frustrating for any family that has any sort of need to plan and prepare for. So that, that's just the reality of where it is as far as Minneapolis Public Schools.
I had a, I had a question that may not be able to be answered, kind of going back to brainstorming ways of how we can communicate and network with more families. And I don't know if there's any quantitative sort of data or anything, but I'm just wondering like, do we know what methods of communication catch most families? Like, I know the Facebook group is a thing, but like, you know, I'm a lurker. So like, I'm in that Facebook group, but I've never posted. But like the same people who are in the Zoom meeting are generally the people that post in the Facebook group. So I'm curious if like, if there's any sort of feeling or, or even data about like, we get, we, we reach most people and we deliver a phone call or the Marcy Press or email or the Facebook group. Do we know like which of those are most effective? Or it's just kind of like, we're trying to have as many avenues as possible and catch as many people as possible through having different means of communication?
I, I don't know that we found the magic thing that has been successful, the most successful. And we've been really fortunate this year to have bilingual professionals in our building that have been building really strong relationships with the cultural group and the language group that they support. So that has been extremely helpful to reach out to families that may not have been able to access some of the written information that we were giving or have access to, or, or the desire really to look on Facebook or access social media. So we try lots of different things and we continue to just keep doing all of those different things because every bit of communication that goes out in any format is going to catch the eye of a different group of people. And there is a lot of word of mouth in some of the communities that we have that go to school at Marcy. So if one parent is able to access information, I know that it's shared in ways that we don't always have the ability to gather like data or information on that happening. So that's a, that's a tough one. And that's kind of like the million dollar question. What is the one way that we could communicate with our families that would be the best for everybody? And I just don't think that there's a, a strong answer to that.
I think the program with the app WhatsApp would be a good avenue to explore too. I know I've heard of at least one school using that. I think it's a lot more common among different populations of people. So that could be an avenue that we look into also.
We've been trying the Talking Points because that's a really nice app that you can type in whatever language is your home language and it will translate automatically for the person on the other side in their preferred language. So we've been sending communication out using Talking Points. But again, that's an app that families have to have or have access to, which does make it difficult sometimes.
Wonderful. I wonder if there's any other comments or questions or ideas of, of ways we can support Marcy families, either through meals or through childcare or through another avenue that anybody wanted to bring up or have thoughts about. We don't have to solve anything tonight. It's almost eight o'clock on a Friday. I know we're all tired. But, but certainly things that we can, we could be thinking about and moving forward. Thanks for coming, Amy Jo. So glad that you were able to come.
I think one thing that is helpful for families to know, and I'm not sure how clearly this has been communicated, but the meals that are provided in the schools, it's a breakfast and a lunch and it's a daily thing as of right now. But a family can go to a school that is close to them. They don't necessarily have to travel to Marcy to be able to get breakfast and lunch for their children. So I think that's something that we'll be communicating more clearly to our families if they're not able to get to Marcy to pick up food.
Do we have any kind of a food bank or a food pantry? Have we ever had anything like that? And I realize there's, there's food drop off and I don't know if there's laws or rules against or pertaining to a food pantry. But, um, you know, folks are at school anyway, or their kids are at school anyway. You still have these barriers about like, some of the people who might most need food support might be the people who are least likely to want to access food support in a place where they're known. But if you have Oreos, people will sometimes make an exception and those are calories, I'm just saying.
We don't currently have like a food bank or a place where kids can go to shop, shop. I know at other schools, kids, like at Riverbend, kids can go and get access to all kinds of things in a little store in the, the building. It would be lovely to get to the point where we could have something like that. I think it would be really beneficial, even like when you think about some of the other schools that are able to have little stores where the kids can go and shop for holidays or whatever that they, that they want to be able to get for their families. But yeah, that's totally something in the future that we can work towards.
What would be really rad is to frame it out as a solidarity space as opposed to a charity and let it be like a community project of the students and the schools and let them have an understanding of what it is to be in solidarity with your community. I think like that would be so rad and be part of sort of that relationship building infrastructure that we could potentially consider in the years moving forward.
I, I love that idea and I love how I'm kind of expanding it beyond kind of food or other kind of toiletry needs to, you know, having places where kiddos can pick up something for, for a family member or friend too, I think. I think that's great. Okay. Anything else with how to support the community before we talk about how to support staff? If anybody does have any ideas later on, please feel free to connect with me and I will try and get us into the, whoever needs to know this information or to share it or whatever the case may be. I am going to put my email in the chat and then I want to talk about how we can support staff as well during this time. Because these folks do take care of our kids or so much of the day and not, not even, you know, just on a physical sense, but on a mental and emotional sense too, right? Connecting with, with our kiddos. So there was also a sheet that had kind of a list of ideas about how you might want to support any striking educators with just different things of whatever you may be able to do. I do want to let everyone know that staff who will be on the strike line will be on the strike line outside of Marcy, not on school grounds. But certainly nearby, and if you went to the school, you'd probably be able to recognize where they would be. That will be happening from 7:30 AM till 10 AM with the idea being, you know, people going into work or coming home from work would, would kind of see that traffic. And then in the afternoons, kind of it'll be citywide grouping. I do also want to let everyone know, just like with the food, if Marcy is not a convenient place for you to show your solidarity with educators because you live right next to South High School, go to South High School and show your solidarity there. It does not have to be with Marcy just because your kiddo attends Marcy. So if there's another school that makes more sense to you, you know, logistically or geographically, by all means, do that. I, I think all schools will kind of be doing different times a little bit. They won't necessarily all be from 7:30 to 10:30. Another thing that I wanted to make sure everybody knows is staff will not have access to their emails during a strike. So if you have any questions or you wanted to send a word of encouragement or I don't know, a complaint or whatever, you can't communicate with staff with, with their emails. If your kiddo's educators have like a Google phone number that they have kind of specific for school, that can be a way that you can communicate with them, but you can't, you know, through email.
Can I say one thing about that, Claire?
Yes, please.
If, if you're going to contact the teachers via their Google numbers, I would really highly encourage you to just communicate words of encouragement. Anything work related. Um, anything work related, they're not gonna respond to and and nor should they, so um, I just wanted to say that.
Sonia, please.
Yeah, this is actually a personal question. I try not to ask personal questions in, but here's here we are. Uh Trinity, I don't know if you know, we have an IEP meeting scheduled for um the eleventh. And if that, if details about that have to change, um, I, am I gonna be, who should I be? Communicating with, so is our due process specialist gonna be? Okay.
So what will end up happening if anything needs to be rescheduled like that, um, Donna and I will be in the building.
Okay.
We will, we will be working so we can touch base and you can reach out to us. Um, and we'll do our best to communicate all of the things that we know and and help make those adjustments as they need to happen.
All right, thank you.
Um, I know um. Me personally, not as a member of Family Connections, but just as a proud Marcy parent. Um, I will be dropping things off um at the picket line. Um, not just for Marcy, but we have friends who are educators across the district. So I'll be going to a couple of different schools, dropping off, you know, hand warmers or donuts or whatever the case may be. Um, and I don't. I don't want it to be the expectation that anybody feels like they need to drop stuff off for the staff, right? Being there to say thank you or or if you're driving past and honking your horn or um. You know, this weekend sending an email of saying, hey, I support you. Thank you for doing what you're doing. Um, those are all kind of wonderful ways to do that, um but if anybody else wanted to add anything about. How, oh, yep.
Um, so um, one other thing is, you know, if it's a nice day. Um, and you're like feeling confident about it, like come march with us, come bring your kids like. We're all in this because we love your kids and seeing like the faces of the like. Children that we serve is such a huge morale boost for us and like. Like, you know, I'm having like. The thought of like, you know, walking out and like not seeing these kids that I care so much about for a long time is. You know, it's getting me a little like, it's getting me a little emotional now, but like, you know, it's something we feel we have to do and like. Um, to get what we need for your kids and for safe and stable schools. And um so like, bring your kids, come march with us, you know, like, that would be such a huge morale boost to us.
One um suggest or one thing I've seen people um offering or trying to coordinate is. Um, nearby houses um for staff to use the bathroom or warm up, um. I don't know exactly how we would go about that or how many people live super close to Marcy. Um, but that seems like it would be something that be would be beneficial to staff.
I agree. We don't live super close, but we live in northeast and I've already offered up our house. That's as a location. I mean, they probably have to drive there, but um if they're going into school.
Yeah, I wonder, I mean, again.
But yeah, if there is anyone, yeah, who who was closer.
Yeah, or I was just gonna say not, you know, we know it's just a percentage of people who are on the Facebook page, but that's one avenue we have to. To post and see if anyone who's even within walking distance um is willing to do that. And we're in South Minneapolis, so.
All right, I just came back. I I missed the last minute or two. Who needs a walking distance person?
We were saying that it would be um beneficial to staff to have a couple. If there are any families that live within walking distance to offer up their house as a place for staff to come use the bathroom or to warm up for ten minutes. Or something.
Bad idea. We live two blocks away.
Well, there you go. We'll all send them to your house, Mike.
Well, let me, let me talk to the boss first.
Yeah, yeah.
Trinity, I have a question. This is going a little bit back more into families. Is that okay? Okay, if there are families, and I don't know what the likelihood of this is, but. Who either bring their kids to school because they are not have some have not, because they did not get. The information that school is not in session, or they're like waiting for the bus to come and pick them up and they call you and they say, hey, the bus isn't here. Do you know what's going on? What is the plan? I mean, obviously that it will be communicated to them that school is not open. But is there any sort of a sort of a protocol at that point of like? Because at that point, you're gonna have, right, like you got, you guys are following my line of thinking, like you're gonna have parents who are supposed to be going to work today. Who don't have a place for their kids to go today, and now it's too late to figure, to use any of the resources. And like, there's no way that we can prevent that from being something that probably happens for some of our families. So what happens then? Do you guys, what happens?
Um, this is something that we used to run into when we would have like um a snowy day. When a family would just drop their kid off and go to work, not knowing that when their child walked into the building, school was closed. Um, so generally, what we do is we contact the family to find out what's going on. See if they can come back and pick up their child and then do our best to work with them to figure out um. When and how that can happen. That's generally, I mean, that's part of the reason why. Administrators are always in the building when we had snowy days or in this sort of a situation. Will be at work every day, um, and just being there to answer phones and support families in any way that we can. And if we hear about like, here's an emergency place where children can go. Um, we're anticipating that we'll hear about those things so that we can share with families if they're in dire need. So that's generally how it works. It's kind of a, we fly by the seat of our pants and do the best that we can to support the families.
Trinity, did you see about North Community, why um twelve bucks a day drop in K through six? Okay, so that's like, and I guess my sister spoke with um, Hallamene is the coordinator over there for that program for the strike. And she said that there did not seem to be concern about capacity and that registration could occur at drop off. So just to, Blaisdell has it too, but that's forty five bucks a day. Most parents could probably scrape twelve bucks together. I could not always scrape forty five dollars together to pay for my kid to be somewhere in a day. But if they're, if they can get their kid over north, that is a good emergency resource potentially.
I know that I will be um the Google Doc that Claire shared. I will have that printed by me as families are calling just so I can share different resources for them. Cause you know, there's gonna be families that have no idea that this is happening.
Trinity, do you also know, I um heard, and I can't even remember where I heard this. But that families will find out Monday evening whether or not the strike will be happening on Tuesday. Is that?
Um, I, my understanding, and I could be wrong, is there are negotiations on Monday. Still happening and then if the negotiations don't happen, um, aren't settled. On Monday, uh MFT has twenty five, anytime during that twenty twenty five days after March eighth. They can call for their members to strike. So it could happen on the eighth, it could happen at any point twenty five days after March eighth. That's my understanding. So um it's MFTs, um they'll be calling the strike and calling their members to strike. And there's a formal process, I think, that they have to communicate to the school district. And then the school district moves forward with communicating it to the families.
Okay, so that's when like the robo-call, I mean, in theory, you might be seeing it on like social media or the news or. And other avenues, but then the district would be doing like the robo-calls and the emails and the text messages and stuff.
Correct, yep.
I have a quick question. Um, do staff and admin, I'm not asking what the information is, but do they find out what's going on in mediation? Or who, nobody is privy to it except the people.
That are there, yeah.
At the table.
Yeah, it's closed and there's, yeah.
Yeah. No, but nobody knows until things are settled then, or?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
I have a question about um, my families are gonna like talk to their kids, um. However, they choose anyways, but I I haven't mentioned it to my daughter. I've been kind of, kind of waiting for her to like come home and and mention something. Um, but like she's gonna go to school on Monday that maybe turns out to be a Friday, um, so. Uh, I'm just curious, like if there's a plan or or if it's sort of teacher by teacher is gonna deal with it, just if there's any sort of. Just so that I know how to communicate with her and I don't want to like, you know, say something before her teacher's gonna say something anyways. Just if there's any sort of a building wide plan or uh just if there's any approach there.
So this is kind of um an interesting thing, cause as the assistant principal, I'm in that manager category. So I have the things like the messaging that I'm allowed to send. And I believe, Andrew, you can correct me again if I'm wrong, because I very well could be, is that teachers are. Not allowed to really talk about the strike to students at school, so it has not been approached. Um, it hasn't been conversation, there hasn't been preparation just because of this constraints that people have. Um, in their roles in the building. Um, I, there are children that are aware that have asked questions. Um, a lot of the staff members were wearing badges about the upcoming strike and some kids asked a few questions. Um, and I, you know, Donna and I haven't given any guidance because we trust the professionalism of our teachers. And we know that the union stewards that we have in our building are excellent communicators. And have done a very good job of preparing our teachers for what the guidelines are, for what they can do, what they can say. And you know, our our staff is pretty great like that. This isn't, at Marcy, there's no content. Like this isn't a contentious situation at Marcy at all. Um, at least that's what I feel and I and I believe it to be true, because you know, you walk through your, through the building and you don't feel that it's contentious. Um. So as as someone that's in a manager position, the, what I say to my kids is that we love teachers. We just love teachers, um, and that's, that's what we say.
Just out of curiosity, who are the union stewards on staff?
Um, I can answer that. They are um, um, they are Sarah Moffett, um.
Can you tell people what they teach or what?
Yeah, Sarah Moffett teaches third grade, um. Um. Who else is there? Pang, who is our um, Trinity, what is Pang's title this year?
Math interventionist this year.
Math interventionist, unless it's today and then she's Nicole.
Correct.
Um, and um, Ashley, who is a first grade teacher. And um, who am I missing?
Melissa.
Yes, Melissa is our um, Melissa is our, um, she was our uh contract action team person and she's our strike captain. So Melissa Machowski, who teaches fourth grade, um, has been our like point of contact with the strike. Um, although all of the stewards have been doing a really great job, um, and I'm speaking as a former steward. Um. Yeah.
Do you wanna, you wanted to say?
Yeah, um, and as far as like, as far as like conversations with children go like. Um, we, I've had several conversations with um with our uh first grader about.
Our own kids.
Yes, our own child, not any of your kids, my kid. Um, about what the strike would mean and about, you know, what we're really, why we're doing it. And you know, the best I can is like a parent trying to explain the world to my kid, um, um, but um. Um, I haven't brought it up with any students. I get questions about it at this point daily. Somebody asks me like. Hey, what's gonna happen? I try to answer really neutrally, really, you know, professionally and go on, you know, teaching. Um, so as a parent, I would encourage all of you to just be like, hey, this is something that could come up. Um, because, because we are trying to be really professional. We're trying not to like, we're not trying to give our, you know, our side of the story to your kids. Um, we're trying to like, you know, we're trying to do this the best way we can do this and um. Of what I really want is just to be like, kids, this is what's gonna happen, like you have to be aware, you like, you have to know. Like, we've had so much instability, like these kids should know that, like, there's a potential that they could not be in school for a little bit. So I would highly encourage all of you to, you know, just prepare your kids for what's going on.
Thank you.
All right, is there anything else that anybody wanted to bring up? Um, or had any questions that weren't, that kind of didn't fall under these kind of broad categories or? Anything else that somebody had a question or a concern?
If the um, if there is a strike occurring on the date of our next site council and family connections meetings, which are the eleventh. Am I right about tenth? I think, um, we, those meetings will, will those meetings still be occurring? Yes.
Donna and I will still hold site council uh with the understanding that our teacher representatives won't be in attendance.
Andrew, can, I don't know if you're allowed to, can you speak to whether attendance at those meetings would be um considered crossing picket?
Site council.
Would be.
Well, it depends, it depends. It depends on if they were um going to the meeting as.
No, for parents to attend.
Right, but like for.
Yeah.
Like for a teacher that's a parent.
Or or Sonia, is your question, hey, if we still hold these as parents, are we saying, hey, we're not in solidarity with the staff that? That are striking.
That is my question, yes. Would it be as though I was crossing a picket line to attend those meetings as a parent who's not an employee of the district?
I would say no, because if Andrew decided to come to site council as a parent of a student at Marcy. He would not be considered crossing the picket line. He would be showing up in his role as a parent of a student that goes to our school. If he were to show up as a teacher representative, then that would be considered crossing the picket line. So there is that distinction based on the role that you're showing up in.
I I think it is useful to have the meetings on the books and I think it is useful for people to be able to attend and coordinate and check in. And I uh am not gonna cross picket line, so I just wanted some clarity on that, so thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions or concerns or thoughts? That anybody wanted to make at this time?
We appreciate every.
Go ahead, Emmy.
I was just gonna say, we appreciate everything everyone, all the staff at Marcy are doing. I know everyone's exhausted and beyond exhausted. Um, and yeah, we appreciate you all and hope, hope things get settled soon for the best.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, I I have to say that as somebody who's in a position to be a leader of a school in a time like this. I'm grateful that I'm doing it at Marcy with the group of professionals that are in our building.
Okay, my friends, I'm going to end the recording and um we can stop.